Okay. Promise you're ready? Let me know when you are good. You good? All right, excellent, perfect. Okay, good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining us. Tonight's Tuesday, December 5th. We're located at the Dr. William Arnoen School in the theater. It being 7:13. And now we'll open this meeting and respectfully ask everybody to stand and salute our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd also like to take a moment and read into the record that in addition to attending our meeting in person, the public can view this meeting by way of television on Comcast Channels 98 or an HD version in 1071, and also online by way of the link www.youtube/thebrocktonchannels. My name is Kathy Ayers and I'm the vice chair conducting the meeting tonight. Unfortunately, our mayor can't join us but has a family event this evening. And I'd like to open up this meeting using a roll call vote to establish a quorum. Ms. Sullivan?
Here.
Mr. Homer?
Here.
Ms. Rivas-Mendez?
Here.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Here.
Ms. Sullivan?
Here.
The mayor is absent and I'm the vice chair. I'm here as well, so we've established a quorum. At this time, we do not, for number two, we do not have any hearing of visitors here tonight. And so I'll move right on to number three, which is the report of superintendent of schools. So, Dr. Cobb, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Ms. Ayers. So, we're going to start off the evening with the student representative reports from Anthony Vega.
Hey, I hope everyone's having a good day. I'm here to report what's going on for the day-to-day events at Brockton High. To start it out a while ago, I'm going to be talking about the Thanksgiving Day football game. BHS lost the hard-fought game against Bridgewater Rainham to end off the season. Both the students and the staff of BHS are appreciative for all the players and coaching staff that took part in the season, and we look forward to the bright future ahead. And then a special congratulations to the standout senior, Ken Montero, for his commitment to the University of Pittsburgh, will he'll continue to showcase his outstanding athletic talents. And all of Brockton High wishes him luck in his collegiate career at Pitt. Next up is the cross-country team. They got an all-expenses sponsorship by Nike to go to Nike's Northeast Regional Championship. They selected only Brockton to attend free of charge, as well as receiving new uniforms and sneakers from Nike. Coach Cliff Canavan, who's been with the team for 20 years, inspired Nike to offer this honor to the team because it's his last year coaching the team. He's retiring this year. So, congratulations to the entire team on receiving this huge honor. And Brockton High wishes Coach Canavan well on his last year of coaching. Next up is the Brockton High Drama Club, who is very excited to present their hard work in their newest performance parlor games, an incredibly amusing, funny, and entertaining experience with a phenomenal cast. So, I advise everyone to come see their hard work on December 8th and 9th at 7:30, and December 10th at 6 o'clock in the Brockton High Little Theater. I know, like, a lot of the cast members and everyone that participated in the show, and they always do a fantastic job with every one of their performances, so I'm not just saying this just to advertise it.
Anybody that saw Mamma Mia last year, they know the talent that comes out of Brockton High, so for sure.
Exactly, yeah. It's unbeatable. And then, our pep rally band got to showcase what it really was to have Boxer pride, as they were reached out to by the Brockton Probation Court to be a part of the National Adoption Day. Not only did they play the national anthem, but stayed during the adoption ceremony and played a small concert at the end. And because of their great performance, which is usual for them, they were also invited back to perform next year.
Nice. That's awesome.
And then, as far as the student feedback, of course, with new principal duarts, new policies and such, there's not going to be any dramatic impact immediately. However, this doesn't mean that the improvements aren't working. For instance, one of the strong differences I see is the list of absent teachers is getting incrementally lesser and lesser. Yes, exactly. Over the past week, or however long it's been, which affects how many kids are wandering and how many kids are sitting in the cafeteria. Of course, there's still progress to be made. It takes time to refurbish, like, the new policies and all that. But I do see that the improvements to the school are trending in a positive direction. I also want to, I didn't write it in the PowerPoint. This came to me after I wrote it. We need to still establish, excuse me, establish a, still more accountability. That's my number-one word. I repeat it, like, every meeting. For just those kids, because all the opportunities given at Brockton High, it's amazing what kids are able to do and able to learn. And there's that small percentage that just don't care, and they keep disturbing the piece, disturbing everyone else's learning environment. And that's really what's bringing down our school's reputation and everything else. So, I think we need to just act maybe a little, I don't want to say harsher, but slightly more, act differently, thank you. Towards that small percentage of people that just can't stick to the rules. And I think we'd see a lot of better improvements throughout the school. All right? That's it? Thank you.
Thank you. I always appreciate your version of what's hap, no, seriously, a student's version of what's happening at the high school, because I know how we're looking at it, and I know how we're addressing it, but to hear it from you, and I want to, I want to express to you that being authentic and transparent is the most important way you can present to us. So, don't sugarcoat, like, we want to know what's going on, like, from your viewpoint. But to hear you say even there's been a small change, and we've moved the needle just a little bit in terms of absenteeism with the teachers, that's huge, because that's just the first step. So, thank you.
I really loved how you said, especially as a student, the perspective of that one word that you used, of accountability. I think that just speaks volumes and is so important to, like, just accountability in every aspect, right? What you were referring to at Brockton High School, but just across the district, especially us. So, just thank you for being accountable, being here today as well.
Yeah. Okay. Moving on.
Okay, moving on. We'll have the EDI recognition of student ambassadors with Danielle Williams to present.
Good evening, everyone. I am very honored to be here today, especially for the occasion, to recognize these student ambassadors behind me. So, I'm going to first read aloud what they have been presented. So, it says, "Congratulations. Certificate of recognition presented by the Brockton School Committee and the Brockton Public Schools." And then it says, "For demonstrating exceptional leadership as a student ambassador and for being a positive role model for their peers." And it's signed by all the school committee members and the superintendent. So, as I call these incredible student ambassadors up, I would like for you to join me in giving them a thunderous, thunderous applause. First, it's my distinct honor to bring forth Chloe Chavez. Kamari Hill. Hence, Oscar Madiras. Kaitlyn Chavez. Amari Jean Baptiste. And finally, but certainly not last, Eliana Amaranti. And we have about 23 other students who are not here, but I'm going to be so happy to deliver this to them in person. Thank you.
Do you want to take pictures? Would they like to take pictures with school committee members?
Renee?
You got a mug for the camera? Yeah, probably over there. It's actually warmer in here tonight.
Cynthia? You ready? No, Tony's missing, but I figured we could at least get some. I'm sorry, Sharon.
Yeah, he's in the, taking bio break.
Yeah. Oh, here he comes. Okay, thank you, everybody, for your patience. Moving on.
Okay. Next on the agenda, what I'd like to do is, you know, we have a district of 24, 25 schools and programs, so I'd like to, each school committee meeting have a school, a middle school, an elementary school, two or three sometimes, because the number of schools, to present what's going on at their school, news, goods, updates, areas of focus. And so, the first school we'll have up today is the Downey School with Principal Yolanda DeFalco.
Wonderful.
Slide presentation. Yeah. We've got to see the slide presentation.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Dr. Wolder, are you going to kick us off? All right, excellent. She's coming. I'm second on the docket.
Good evening. And as Dr. Cobb just said, one of the things that we want to make sure that we're doing is really highlighting the significant work that is happening in our district. Our attendance for the district is at 92.2%. Our goal is 95. So, we will be working to continue to move in that direction. Our enrollment is up slightly from December 1st. That's not on that slide. So, this is just district-wide. We are currently at 15,227 students. So, our enrollment is up slightly from this time last year. So, we are trending upward, and most of the enrollments are impacting our elementary level. And so, our elementary numbers are climbing. And so, what we are also seeing is a significant change in our multilingual learners. So, since July 1st, the start of what would be the start of this school year, we have enrolled 932 multilingual learners. And so, when we're looking at how we are programming schools, budgeting schools, we have trends that are happening in this district that we really want to make sure that we're highlighting in this space, along with the actual work that is happening in our schools, because our schools are rocking. We're not hearing enough of that. And so, when you get out and you get to see what they look like, how our kids are doing, how our teachers are functioning in spaces with all of the changes that have taken place, we really need to highlight and honor the work of education in this district in a way that we haven't had a chance to yet this year. So, that is the purpose of us bringing the schools before you, so the principals can tell their stories of what's happening in their schools, so that we can also highlight some of the challenges that every school is facing, and so that we can work together to make sure that we provide the best quality education for kids in Brockton. So, handing it over to the principal of the Downey.
Thank you very much. My name is Yolanda DeFalco and the principal at the Downey School. I am a Brockton student, graduate of Brockton High School. Prior to being principal, I was a classroom teacher, an ESL teacher, and a literacy coach. So, my lens is expansive. Jennifer Colburn is our assistant principal. It's her first year with us as the assistant principal. She and I graduated from Brockton High School in the same year, so that's really exciting. And the face of the front office, we have Mr. DJ Nazan. He is our admin assistant. We have just about 600 students in grades pre-K through 5, and our specialized programs include integrated. We have integrated classrooms in pre-K through 5. Life skills, we have pre-K, kindergarten, grades 2 and 3 for life skills classrooms, and we have grades 3 through 5 in EI, our emotionally impaired classrooms. Some areas that I'm really excited to share with you are building communities, our Wonders implementation, and our thoughtful inclusion. So, for building communities, this has been a huge piece that Mrs. Colburn and I started out this year. And we started strong with our new curriculum, the Character Strong curriculum, and that is the social-emotional learning curriculum that Brockton Public Schools brought in. We have tied Character Strong itself, as well as the traits that go along with it, to our PBIS. We use it with morning announcements every single day. We use it at lunchtime. One of the slogans with Character Strong is, "What we practice becomes a habit, and good habits grow character." And we are really trying to instill in all of our students the different traits that help them build character. And we started Duck of the Month, so it's essentially our student of the month, citizen of the month. So, our first traits, we had our kindness, respect, responsibility, and gratitude. So, our ducks of the month get a little certificate and a little rubber duck to bring home with them. Character Strong has actually made a huge difference in the culture and the climate of the school in general. So, we are really happy to see that implemented. Our restorative practices, last year, all administrators had the opportunity to receive some training in restorative practices. And what we do is, we help students work through problems. So, we have them work through any conflicts that they're having, take accountability when accountability needs to be taken, and go forward with either strengthening a relationship, building a relationship, repairing any harm that had happened. So, that has been a huge piece this year. And something that we have spent a lot of time on, particularly with our 5th grade students, is an anti-bullying curriculum. So, this was through essentially MARK, which is the Massachusetts Aggression Reduction Center. And we had reached out because we noticed that the 5th graders were having lots of conflicts in, outside of school, online with the cyber bullying. We noticed that conflicts as far anything, from just not being kind to putting their hands on each other. And we really wanted to do something to combat this issue that we saw, and really strengthen our community in the 5th grade. So, we reached out to the MARK Center, and they were unable to have someone come out to our school to actually do a presentation, but they did send us the curriculum. So, between myself, our assistant principal, and our school adjustment counselors, as well as the grade 5 classroom teachers, we have been taking the curriculum that they presented to us, really building the classroom community. And some of the, some of the topics that are discussed are, what instances do you feel that you've been bullied in school, outside of school? What are some of the issues that you see in the classroom? What are some ways that we can stand up for ourselves? What are some ways that we can help stop bullying? And together, they problem solve. We actually, one of the pictures that you see up there is the boy with his hands on a piece of paper. One of the activities was, the paper was crumpled, and they had to pass it around and try to make it look brand-new. And so, that was a little analogy to, once you hurt somebody, that they never are the same. So, it has been very powerful for our students. We're seeing small changes in students. We're seeing big changes in students. So, as far as things that I'm really proud of, the building communities is, I think, our number-one top spot. Also, we have Wonders Implementation. All teachers are using the Wonders program with fidelity. So, every time we walk into a classroom, we see the Wonders materials out. You see a small group, and there's also Lexia, there's a student on Lexia. Lastly, our thoughtful inclusion. We are, we have been really careful and thoughtful about maximizing inclusive opportunities for students with disabilities, for specialists, lunch, recess, and academics. So, our specialists have students in both sub-separate classrooms and general education classrooms together. They are always integrated into lunch, academics, as they are ready. We decide based on each student which subject they should begin integrating into, and then we start there. And I say recess, if you take a look, we do have a brand-new program, a brand-new playground this year. And the playground has some areas that are particularly designed for our special-needs students. So, students in wheelchairs who have limited mobility can use the playground. There are some sensory things on there. So, this has been, it's something that all of our students, pre-K through 5, general education, and students with disabilities have really been able to enjoy. Some areas that we are working to address. Data analysis, as far as supporting structures and building capacity to use data effectively. We have plenty of data, and our challenge comes in finding the time for teachers to get together and to actually review, analyze, and then determine next steps. Professional development, increasing opportunities for teachers to meet regularly for planning, curriculum, and data review. As I just mentioned, it's really finding time for like-content area teachers or, like, grade-level teachers to get together. That's not impacting the school day. If they're out of their classroom, they're missing the instruction. So, really being creative with that. And attendance. As far as attendance goes, we are monitoring, monitoring regularly, and we are trying to get all students to school by way of ensuring that their families have the support that they need to get students to school. Character Strong is helping us build our school community so that the kids want to be there, but that is an area that we are also working to address. And here's my why we come to work every day. Just a couple of quotes. The first one goes along with Character Strong. A student said, "I showed gratitude this morning. The crossing guard was helping kids cross the street, so I said thank you to him." Grade 5 student, the Downey School is so unique. And I love the Downey School because it's a great school and everybody else gets to come here, too. And we have our wonderful custodians. We have Be The Reason Someone Smiles today. Each year, he adds something, and that's right in our front lobby when you walk in. I have a picture, the boy holding the yellow paper, that's Brody. And he received a positive office referral. This is something else that ties into Character Strong. We ask teachers to check off which traits they are seeing, and we read their names over the announcements every Friday, and they come to the office, and we cheer and we yell, and it's a whole big, exciting thing for them. There's a picture of Mrs. Colburn celebrating a friend's birthday. Everyone got to sing happy birthday to him. And lastly, our staff is so unbelievably dedicated. And this particular picture was taken on Lee National Denim Day. And our staff and our students are one big community, and they are, they understand the reason that we come to work every day is for our students. Thank you very much. That is all I have. Do you have any questions for me? Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Next is Dr. Lovell from the Ashfield Middle School.
Hi, everyone. This is Ms. Montron, Charlie Montron. She is the associate principal at the Ashfield. And I am the principal. And together, we run the best school in the city. All right. So I just wanted to give you a few quick facts about our school and, and who we are. Just to let you know, 78% of the whole school got an A in citizenship. That means that they were not written up at all for anything. So that's a huge win. We've been doing it like Character Strong and some of the other programs as well, but that was a big win for us. Currently, we have the second highest enrollment for the middle schools, right after the Plouffe, then the Ashfield, even though we're not the biggest building. We're the smallest building. So that's been a little bit of an interesting thing this year. We have, right now, in our school, 166 of our students, or 32%, are multi-language learners, which is a, a big deal. And most of those students are really new. They've been, they come every day, every day we come in and there's, there's a new kid. So that's a, that's a thing. We do participate in the Empower Program, Empower Self-Program with Mr. Turner. We've been working since he first started in the district. Ashfield was one of the first schools. And our kids are continuing with that, they're going to Bentley, I think, and then next week to the Live Trading Room. So we have a lot of success with that program. So the Ashfield always has a lot of students participate. We have another win recently, just checked the data, and we are under 10% of chronically absent, which is a, a big goal. Our, our target is like 15 or 16%, so we're well below our target right now, which means that students are missing less than 10%. So we run that report and regularly check in on that. So this is a, that's a big win. We have 184 of our students, or 36% of the students are in the Honors Academy classes. So you can see if 30, like we have almost a reverse curve here. We have a lot of real newcomers and then we have Honors Academy. So it's a, it's a pretty interesting mix of students in our school. We have an Ashfield Allies Group, which helps to support diversity in our school. They meet twice a week during elective time. That's what they choose to do with their time. So students who are not in an active intervention are able to go and be part of our allies, which is a, a great thing. We have a 21st Century After School Program. We're targeting mostly sixth graders this year. There's a lot of sort of career kind of focus in those programs that we're running. 20% of all of our students, so 102 kids, are students with disabilities. And of that number, 35% of the 20% are substantially separate students in our City Resource Room Program. So again, we have a lot of high-needs students in our school. One of our, another thing that we were able to do this year to our moderate special needs teachers, we were able to assign them so that there's an eighth grade, a teacher working just with the eighth grade math and science, and one working with the English. And now they're able to get into the Common Planning so they can be part of the lessons from the start and not having to go in and sort of find out what the plan is and how to remediate for students. So they're right in with the planning of the lessons. So we're pretty excited to try that out this year, and it seems to be working really well. All right. So these are the areas that we're really proud of. Our three big areas were for the accountability status from last year's MKAS. We hit the 30th percentile, which was a lot of growth. And we had 55% substantial growth toward our targets. And that's across many of the subgroups were also significant, especially our multi-language learners. They have met their targets for attaining language proficiency. So they actually met the target, which is great. It's very hard to do because as they improve, they're reclassified and taken out of the group. So to continue to make that progress is a big deal. And the teachers have been working very, very hard on that. And the other thing which impacts our school that's been a big deal is, since we began PBIS in like 2019 is when we first rolled it out, we had it for the first three months of school, about 562 sort of write-ups of behavior issues back then. Last year, we were, you know, having coming back from COVID, our PBIS in full swing, the teachers really working on building positive relationships with the students. It went down to 291, all right? I'm sorry, it went from 469. So we went from 562 down to 469. And this year, for the first three months of school, we were at 291. So that's anything from kids being written up, from not having, you know, not being on time, to different, different issues. It's been a great drop in, in that. So we're really excited about the culture that we're building in the school. And I think a lot of it comes from the relationships that the teachers are actively trying to cultivate. All right. So what's, what's downside? What are the things that we're working on now? The big things we're really trying to target is, like I said, we have a huge amount of students, multi-language learners, newcomers in our school. In our sixth grade, right now, the class size is 40 in the class. And there is not a para in there to support them. We're just getting, I think it was just approved last night. Ironic. No, it's great. But that is, that was just approved so at least we can get someone who help, hopefully is a bilingual para who can speak the language, because right now, that's a big barrier with all the newcomers. Many of our students haven't used a lot of technology before, and that's a big part of our school. So just teach, getting kids to log on, trying to get 40 kids to log on in 45 minutes is really a big challenge. So these are the things that we're struggling with. And grades, grade seven, not that much better, 38 in the class. And 31, grade seven is 38, and 31 in grade eight. So this is something that, you know, that we are struggling with right now, but hopefully we can continue to make progress with the students. You can see that the kids are not misbehaving, they're not, there's a lot of great learning coming on. We actually have some teachers from other schools coming to watch our teachers deal with their kids. And there's amazing lessons happening in the classroom. So it's a great testament to the hard work of the teachers. The other thing, class size. So when we look at, you know, well, why, maybe we could move some kids out, the regular, the, not regular, but the students who are not in bilingual program are also very high numbers. So, you know, we have 31, 32, 27. So it's not like there's 10 or 8 in another room. So we got, we got high numbers everywhere, especially grade seven and eight. We used to have six sections. With last year's cuts, we went down to only five sections. So we're taking the kids, dividing them up by, into five sort of cohorts for the day. So it's been a little bit of a struggle, and that's something that we're looking to address. So those are our, you know, challenges that we're, and every day, we come up with a new way to work on it. Okay. So now the last slide that we're given. Why do we come to work every day? I have a quote from one of our seventh-grade students, Destiny. "I like how the Ashfield Middle School makes me feel safe and comfortable. I can be myself and make a lot of friends. That's why I love the Ashfield. That's what makes it different from other schools is I love being here." We do have a lot of great things going on for students, whether it's, you know, the, the band, the electives, the honor roll assembly that was in the corner. We had like a candy bar bingo for all the students who made honor roll. But, and also, I know you may have seen us on television the other day with the New England Patriots and the Naval Academy, Retired Naval Academy Minority Outreach Program came to our school with these robots, and the students were able to program them and race them. It was, it was an amazing thing. That's Dedrick Wise, who didn't play in the game. So he didn't, hopefully he didn't get anything at the Ashfield because he wasn't well enough to play. So, but we have a lot going on. We have the zoo coming in in two weeks.
Yep, next week.
Next week, all right? We've had, we've been to Gillette Stadium also to do a helmet concussion protocol thing about building helmets. We've been doing a lot of active things in and out of the building, been to, some of the kids have been to the zoo, we head to the Science Museum. So we're really trying to keep as much engaging thing and open the kids' horizons for as many new experiences as possible. Any questions? Hi. That's it? Good?
Excellent, thank you. Hmm? Exactly. Okay. So as I mentioned, we, you know, we, we have a district of a lot of schools. I know, you know, Brockton High School, rightfully so, has taken up a lot of time and energy. But, you know, we, we need to make sure we recognize what's going on in the rest of the district and the great work, the hard work that teachers and staff are doing in the buildings. And, you know, when I, when I do the school visits, I walk through, it's, it's amazing. It's great. You know, the students are engaged, they're in the classroom, the teachers are engaging, they're working in groups, they're working, they're doing lectures. We have challenges, but there's a lot going on and a lot of good going on in the district.
Yeah, there is.
Like I said, so every, every school committee look for, you know, two schools, at least 6%, sometime we might do three, just to kind of give you updates and, you know, get news, goods, and challenges. And I just want to thank, you know, Principal DeFalco and Dr. Lovell for their presentation. Thank you. Any questions on the, anything, any comments? Okay. Next, I just want to do a quick update, a quick update on the Yonder Bags. I see we made a newspaper again about the Yonder Bags. So I, I really did take a second look and reached out to the representatives from the company. And they, they actually have changed their policy somewhat because of the feedback from other, you know, organizations, school districts. So now, we don't have to lease the bags, however, we have to purchase the bags. And we still have to purchase enough bags for the whole high school. So, which means, you know, and, and if we purchase them, you have to purchase enough. So if you're going to use them for the whole school, you'd have to like 10% to turn over. So we would have to purchase about 4,000 bags at $30 each, which would bring the cost to about $120,000. Exactly. And then there's four, and the requirement, the Yonder Company does do training, so there'll be four people, because there's one each main entrance for each house in the morning to help train on how to use the bags. So that comes with a cost of $2,500 each. So it's another $10,000. With about $130,000 if we really want to go down that avenue with the Yonder Bags.
So for some reason, and I could be wrong, I'm looking at Mr. Rodriguez to make sure I'm not crazy, but I thought they were like $10 or $11 each.
And they, they, again, they, they shared this to me, they, they had a new pricing structure, it was $30, $30 each. And I think that's because they have, it's a purchase, not a lease anymore, because obviously they made money on the lease. I just, I had actually looked online to see where there were alternatives to the Yonder Bag. And I did find another company that's similar, but, you know, there's different trade-offs. So the, this company is called Phone Locker. And they're a company out of, I think it's Australia. And they, they sell the bags as well, between $15 and $30 per, per pouch for students. They have the same locking mechanism and magnet that, that the Yonder Bags have. But again, they're, they're a foreign company, so I'm not sure how the exchange rate would work. And again, it's a purchase, so, and, and their policy is pretty similar. You purchase enough for the whole student body. Just to, we addressed that. The other thing is, you know, we, I know, I think initially, we talked about using the Yonder Bags, it was the eighth grade as well as the, the high school. But from my understanding and walking through the middle school, phones are not an issue in the middle schools. They're put away, they're in the bags, they're, it's, it's not an issue at all. It's really the high school.
So the only couple things. Number one, thank you so much for doing the additional research, because it's something that, you know, not only did the Yonder Bags make it into the papers, but one of the other things that has been coming up more and more is they're, you know, recommending cell phone policies. Like you see it everywhere now where schools are all considering cell phone policies. So I, I kind of feel like we're not, you know, stepping out into unwanted territory. I feel like we're right where everyone else is and trying to, you know, kind of push structure. My question is, the only other, the only other bag or security mechanism is out of the country versus yonder? There isn't any, I mean, that just, it sounds crazy.
It is. I, I was surprised as well, but that's, that's what I found. And I, you know, I didn't, I sent an inquiry online, but I haven't heard back from them as far as what, what their policy, their procedure is and purchasing and actually get a real price for Brockton High School, but I will follow up on that.
And I mean, understood. We have a huge high school, so it's like, obviously for us, you know.
Australia.
Yeah. But Mr. Rodriguez, please.
I know Desi had a program that will support us financially with the policy. So I'm trying to.
There was like a reimbursement or something, like if we did it, they would, yeah, they would fund.
They funded a certain portion. So, I mean, if it's, if we're going to purchase it and, because that's what they're looking at across the Commonwealth, is to see what school districts, what policies are working, what's not working. So they can come up with their own, because it's eventually going to take full effect. But I was, I'm just trying to figure out what the actual numbers is, if we can look into it, because I know.
I'll look into it.
That was mentioned in previous meetings about them supporting the cost mechanism behind it.
And I know that Springfield used yonder because that's where we went, but I'd be curious in what Lawrence is using and some of the other districts that are also, you know, doing cell phone, have cell phone policies, if they are also yonder or if they've used a different company. Any other questions on the floor? I just wanted to make sure we open it up to everyone. Thank you for the research, Dr. Cobb.
You're welcome. Okay. You want this?
Yes, please, and thank you.
If you want, I can, I can email, copy that to everybody.
Or I'll scan it and email to everyone.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. So the next update is from City CFO Troy Clarkson, financial, we have a few things to discuss.
I have to grab. I gave everybody else a coffee, but myself.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the school committee. I'm happy, once again, to be before you to discuss several issues, actually, but certainly a general update on the, the status of finances in the Brockton Public Schools. As has become our custom, we've provided you with a general update, the budget summary that we've been sending you before every meeting. I did, at the request of Member Azak, send this to you yesterday, so you had some time to review. If you'd like for future reports, to have them sent even earlier, then we're happy to do that. But in looking at the report, the spending continues to be within prescribed limits. I will talk in a minute about an effort that we're undertaking to integrate all of the spending. As I've mentioned several times, this is general fund spending, but does not incorporate revolving funds and grants. So I'll, I'll get to that in a minute, but just wanted to speak to you in a, in a general way. And I'll certainly, as always, answer any questions you might have. One of the issues that has emerged in the last several weeks as we continue to review and provide feedback on the position control forms that we're using to verify funds behind positions, is that because the budget is set up in Munis the way that it is, and we've talked about this every time I've come to visit you, there may be requests for positions where there's no money in that particular line or that particular area. So we've developed a system, Dr. Cobb's, myself, and our respective teams. If you remember, the last time we were here, we talked about the difference between the budget that you voted as a school committee and the budget that exists in this report. And so within those, what we call statutory categories, within the, the budget that you approved, under the authority vested in the superintendent, money can be moved within those categories. So we've developed a system where temporarily, for this year's budget, we have the ability to document moving some of that money around within the budget so that position control forms that come to my office can be supported by identifying areas where there are surplus funds right now and moving them to places where needs exist to fill positions. And so we're able to not only process those more swiftly, but to do so in a way that provides funding where it needs to go. And I think that's an important development of us working together that prioritizes the needs that are identified by Dr. Cobb's and his team to, to put people where they're needed. And so that, that's an important development as we continue to try to understand the totality of the budget and where the funds are available. As we continue to try to understand the totality of the budget and where the funds are available, we're really trying to maximize the effort to give principals and department heads the flexibility to conduct their operations without limitations. And so that, I think, is an important development. Related to that, I think in the coming weeks, you're going to hear the term roster review probably quite often. That's an initiative that we've undertaken with the support, and really under the leadership of our consultant TJ Plant from Open Architects. We're trying to develop a firm understanding of the relationship between the employees in the Brockton Public Schools and how they fit into the budget, because we're, at this point, not completely confident that the budget reflects how people are actually being paid, where they're being paid from. So today, Dr. Cobb sent out a memo to all of the principals and department heads with an actual proposed, as best as the information as we have at this point, with a roster of who we believe is employed in those buildings or in those departments. Asking each of those principals and department heads to review that list, to give feedback to us, as to the people that are or are not being paid out of those areas. That will allow us to have a much more accurate picture of the fiscal year 24 budget, where the money's being directed, where people are being paid from, and that'll give us a picture of, a clearer picture than this spreadsheet of where we're at so far this fiscal year. Along with that, I met this afternoon with some school and city finance folks, and we are working toward providing feedback to, again, principals, department heads, but also their administrative support staff, in really understanding on a more granular level what people are being paid from grants and from revolving funds. Because we're now trying to move, to understand where folks may be paid out of grants or revolving funds. Possible that folks are being paid out of grants that have expired, or revolving funds that don't have money behind them. So, once we gather all of that information, we will have, I think, a much more accurate snapshot of where we are in fiscal '24 that we can then discuss with you. And that's really important. It's painstaking, very detailed work, but I want to thank Dr. Cobb and his team in the central office for really being cooperative in trying to help us understand this and gather the tools that we really need to make that happen. What that will also do, and I know I say this at every meeting, but it's really our goal, all of this information that we're gathering will allow us to then work with Dr. Cobb and his team to present you a fiscal year 2025 budget that has detailed information by school, by department, of who is supported in those organizations, what it costs to run those operations, and suggest to you that you actually vote a budget that reflects those costs. What that will do is allow us then, moving forward, to have a rolling understanding and a much more accurate picture on a daily, weekly, monthly basis, however often you'd like us to report, on exactly what the costs are. Because what we can tell you today is, in general, we think general fund spending is within the limits that you prescribed in the budget, but it's difficult to draw a correlation between this budget report that we provide to you at every meeting and an actual reflection of what it costs to run each building or each operation in the Brockton Public Schools. So, we've made what I think is some significant progress in developing that information. We'll continue to report on it to you, but I'm pleased that I think we're really moving forward in a productive way. One of those ways that we're trying to move forward is one of the sub-items that I'm before you on tonight. As I mentioned at one of my first, one of my first reports to you, the school committee is the body that has the ability, the duty, the responsibility to vote on paying prior year bills. We have compiled a list, and they are before you tonight, not only a memo from me and an attached spreadsheet, but actually each of the invoices. These are bills that have been provided to us, to the school business office, and to my office, that are prior year bills, and the proper way to address those is to bring them before the school committee and ask you for a vote. As you can see, the totality of these bills amounts to just over $113,000. In anticipation of the question of where that money is going to come from, if you have your budget report with you, in the section that's listed net school spending, under business office, you'll see under business office, there's a line for contract services that has a balance of well over $2 million, and that's where we will pay these bills from. They're from a variety of places, but for now, just to try to track them, that's where the money will come from. So yes, the funds do exist in the budget to address these. There are others, we believe, unpaid bills from fiscal year 2023, but we're working with all of the schools and departments to try to compile those. And hopefully, at your next meeting or shortly thereafter, we'll have the final number of prior year bills. So, if any of you watched the city council meeting, you'll see that this is a fairly common practice with them as well. It usually occurs when vendors send their bills into the district or the city after the fiscal year has closed, and there's usually a window of several weeks if those bills are received after that period. Or in some cases, sometimes departments have bills and they get lost in the shuffle, or they, folks forget to send them, whatever the case is. Obviously, this year in the Brockton Public Schools has been a little extraordinary. Some may have had concerns that there weren't funds to pay the bills. At any rate, we're compiling these, it's important to bring them before you, so in the light of day, these prior year bills are being addressed. And it's just one more step we're taking to try to tighten up the operation and to have discussions here where they belong about what our financial responsibilities are. So, that's all I have for a general update. Actually, there was one more item, and that is, it's listed on here, an appropriation of funds. What that really encompasses, what I've already talked to you about, as we progress through the fiscal year and develop that deeper understanding of exactly where the cost centers are, we may come to you and ask you to move money when there's money that's required within those statutory categories that you voted back in last June. If money needs to be moved between those categories, that can't be done within the staff, that requires a school committee vote. So we're monitoring that, those numbers closely, and may ask you to do some of those transfers as well. But I wanted to highlight for you, before we even contemplated that, that that too is a role of the school committee and something we may do. If we are able successfully to work with you to create a budget for next year that's much more detailed than the budget you voted for this year, that will become, not in every meeting, but a more common occurrence, because the budget will actually be voted in more detail than it is now, allocating the money to each operation where we think it should be. So, we're always working in three fiscal years, closing out one, planning, working within one, and planning for another, and that's what we're doing right now. So, we're getting ready, I think, to close the chapter that was fiscal year '23, and hopefully you'll have more to say on that in coming meetings. But we're working very hard in the current fiscal year to be more accountable and transparent, and already starting to plan for next year. So, Madam Chairman, thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
So, I have one quick one, and this is, I want to just be clear, this is no reflection on you at all, but why would we be getting invoices that are dated like August of 2022? I'm just curious. Like, you know, I understand that some invoices could be left on a desk or something else, I just, it's December, so I'm just wondering, like, how could, and it scares me that we have this pile, but this could possibly not be the last of it. So, I'm just curi, I guess I'm just curious, like, are these the processes that TJ is looking at as well, to say, okay, we should have gotten these invoices in a more timely manner, or there's not a process in place to ensure we get the invoices in a timely manner? I just am trying to understand.
So, the answer is yes, this is most certainly a process that we're trying to bring some structure, some written policies and some order to. And I think it's the lack of structure and written policies that have led to this. And so, one of the things we'll be doing is working with the school committee and with the administration to develop written policies for how this sort of thing should be done. By comparison, I can tell you, we, working with, under the leadership of the mayor, two years ago, passed Brockton's first set of financial policies. So, written policies are something that I think act as guideposts and guardrails for municipal and school operations. But with turnover, so much here was done by tradition, and when someone would leave a slot, they'd say to the next person that followed them, here's how we do things. Formalizing that and modernizing that with written policies, I think, will help prevent this sort of thing happening in the future.
Thank you. Any other questions on the floor? Mr. Homer?
Thank you, Mr. Clarkson, for providing those. So, just to quickly recap, these are invoices for vended services, a lot of them look like, you know, just mechanical machinery, structural services, equipment supplies. There are invoices from 2020 in here, for almost $5,000 for police services at various schools. I kind of, I share Ms. Ailer's concern that we're just getting things now from 2020, and I think this just shows how quickly things add up, that we're finding things that we don't know. When you mention policies and things, because these are vendors that we're contracting with to provide services to us, we're gaining the benefit of those services in the buildings, and the students are gaining those benefits, but how can we create policies that require those vendors to provide us with the invoices? And what is the recourse when they come to us almost four years later with a bill that hasn't been paid? Is that a public school's accounting office oversight, where they're not watching that they haven't paid out an expected service that was obtained by the district? Or is that, can we expect that vendors will just come up to us with unpaid invoices from years ago, prior to some of us serving on the school committee, and say, this previous school committee never paid us for these services?
It's an excellent question. So, I'll give you a little texture, a little history, you know, I've worked in several different communities in my career. In a town, these unpaid bills would be paid at either a fall or a spring town meeting, generally in the spring, but could be paid at both. In a city, it's done by the city council, or in this case, the school committee. This is sort of conjecture, but I would say, when local vendors understand that the city or town is vigilant about getting vendors to get paid, and that possibly, if you submit it late, it could take weeks or months to get paid, then they tend to tighten it up. So I agree that we couldn't, we can't pass a policy to hold vendors accountable, but I think we can be more aggressive and track through various means internally what vendors have provided services and not billed us, and then follow up with them to try to encourage them to bill more timely. This, I will tell you, is an extraordinary amount. But I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but for those committee members that have been here for some time, I don't think this is a practice that's been employed previously in that, in recent memory, you've had unpaid bills. But as we can see from this, there are bills from previous years that probably should have come before the school committee. So we're trying to clean up something that has been an issue for a while. There probably, probably, I learned this afternoon, there are more, I'm guessing that maybe vendors watching this on television that say, jeez, there might be something. So we can expect to see these trickle in, hopefully not for much longer, but it's one of the things we're working on to try to prevent in the future.
Mr. Rodriguez, please.
So, and I know Kathy, you were in the training with me. So this is basically a system where I think that we should implement a warrant system. Tell me if I'm wrong, you know, when it comes to paying bills, I think that there should be a warrant system in order to make sure that these bills are actually paid on time, because it's concerning that, you know, we have an invoice from 10/22, you know, it's over a year.
Bills are paid on a warrant system here? I think what's missing here is the bills not getting to be processed, for whatever reason. And that's why their prior year bills, and you can't simply pay a prior year bill on a warrant if the time has passed and the books are closed, then it has to come before the school committee.
So I understand that with the warrant system, so who on the school committee has that ability to sign it, because the school committee has to be involved in that warrant system. So you're telling me that we have a warrant system? So I'm trying to figure out who on the committee, or is that something that's been missed throughout the years?
So, over at city hall, we have a warrant system, and the mayor executes the warrant for vendors to be paid. And that includes school committee, school department bills that come over to the city. I'm not aware whether or not it's been a practice, or not a practice, for the school committee to execute warrants here as well. Something we can certainly look into.
I don't, I don't want to step on your toes, Mr.
No, I know, but I mean, like, just being curious, I would, I think we need to take a deeper dive to see who has the authority on the warrant system here on the school side? I mean, is it the mayor? His authority as being the chairman to sign off on that? I think there should be an elected member of the seven wards that signs off on that, or a sub-separate subcommittee to make sure that these bills are being paid on time, and that's checks and balances.
I don't want to answer specifically, I can answer broadly. Again, communities where I've worked, depending on the form of government, the actual charter in a community, I have seen communities where the executive, meaning the town administrator or the town manager, executes warrants, others where that, because of the charter, that authority is vested in a select board. So it varies by community, so I would suggest it's something we can and should look at here, to see if the process that's being followed matches what's in our city charter.
No, I agree with you, I mean, we, you know, we're all looking for answers, just to make sure that, you know, everything is being done properly. You know, we should just, you know, I know we don't have a legal here, but just to make sure that, that we, you know, that, you know, we do have a warrant system, and we're not, you know, when did that warrant system process fall apart? In my four years, I've never, I've never seen a warrant system here, and I've been training with Mrs. Allen, Vice Chair, you know, we looked at each other like, we need to implement this. And this is way before the financial crisis.
And I, sorry.
No, no.
And to Mr. Rodriguez's point, I think we were both looking for the warrant system to manifest in our accounts for review subcommittee, and so that's something that we should look at in terms of how that information is actually getting to us, so that we can make those decisions in a timely manner, versus getting a stack that's this big, and this is no reflection on you, getting a stack of papers this big on everything that's already happened in the past.
Sure.
Nothing that's, requires decision or meaningful discussion that's coming up. And I think that's part of the process that we've been missing as a committee, that's all. But to Mr. Rodriguez's point, I think we need to go backward to go forward in regards to that.
Just to piggyback...
Just to piggyback, it's just like, you know, if I'm a vendor and I'm providing some of these services, and it's been over a year, I don't think, you know, I would say that, you know, the city of Brockton is not, you know, friendly when it comes to doing business, because they're not paying their bills. So, yeah, we definitely, we need to take a deeper dive to, you know, come up with a better process and a quicker one, so that we are paying our bills on time, because we know there's late fees, and making sure these are all budgeted appropriately when it comes to that. So, because I know with some of these bills, you know, we're dealing with a deficit is more of, did we budget for these bills that haven't been paid for over a year?
And, I mean, some of these bills are from the Brockton Police Department, with all due respect, and it's for, you know, work that was done in March 2020, supporting the polls. I'm like, I'm looking at this and thinking, I hope these officers got paid. I'm sure they did, but you know what I mean?
Yes.
So, anyway, thank you very much, Mr. Clarkson. I appreciate it.
Can I just ask one more question, too? This, Mr. Clark, there's a couple of bills in here from Eversource, but the due date for payment is coming up this month, on the 11th of this month. But I just don't understand why that money wouldn't get paid out of the utilities category that we have. Why would we take from a different category to pay bills that we're actually under, we're under budget in our utilities category? We're at 22.76% for spending. We're at 30.54%, including encumbrances and things. But I just, I don't understand why, even just like small amounts, like this is a bill for $891, but it's not due yet, and why would we, why would we spend money from a different category instead of from utilities to pay Eversource for services at Colonel Bell Drive? I apologize. I don't, I don't know if the page number, but it's pretty deep into the packet. It's probably toward the center of the packet before the-
It was National Grid, right?
Uh, it's-
Or was it Eversource? Okay, gotcha.
I'm just confused, just because it feels like if we have to vote on things like that, I just, I don't, I, I look through it quickly, but I don't, I understand where some of these come from. And again, I don't want to take the job of deciding which accounts we're paying things from and micromanaging it, but I just think, like, if we have a budgeted amount for energy services and utilities and things, and then we get a bill from Eversource, I mean, it's not even due yet, but it's not something that seems to, would fit into this category of an overdue bill, or something that we haven't spent from previous years. I don't know if that's-
You know, I'm looking at it, and let me speak to the broad question you asked, and then to this specific bill, because in looking at it, this bill should probably be on a regular warrant, and I'm honestly not sure why it got in here with this list of unpaid bills. But the, to the broader question, we're trying to understand how much, how many and how much of these unpaid bills are out there. So paying them out of that one source, I think, gives us the opportunity for this year to quantify exactly the scope of the problem. And although I understand, we do have, in the Munis report, lines for utilities, but as I've stated before, one of the real challenges we have in trying to understand the budget is that this report does not necessarily correspond to the budget that you voted. So we're trying to actually reconstruct a budget that will realistically be for next fiscal year, that is a very detailed, accurate reflection of what it costs to run the school department. Because the categories that you voted in the budget last spring were so broad, the true budget is in very broad categories, and the lines that you see here are for accounting purposes, but don't relate to the budget that you passed. So under normal circumstances, you're absolutely correct. If you look on the city side budget, then the utility lines, utility costs are paid out of there. We're struggling to understand how this Munis budget was created and for what purposes, because that's, as I mentioned earlier, we're transferring money on a fairly regular basis now to accommodate requests for positions, because those portions of the budget weren't funded. So we have a budget that is not reflective of the costs to run the school department. And so, at least for these unpaid bills, tracking them in their total, so that we know what the scope of the problem was, is useful for us in trying to create a more accurate budget for next year. But as to that specific bill, I'll take a look and, and try to understand what, what the team was thinking, and maybe mistook that for a different bill, because it is a current year bill.
Okay. Yeah, I, I mean, I understand, if I understand correctly, then it sounds like by looking at, do you mean to say, like, by taking a deeper dive, and looking at the operating costs and expenses at each of the sites, each of the school buildings, allows you to make a better projection of how the 2025 budget should look?
That's exactly right.
Right, okay. So, and does that, does that mean you're looking at energy costs and expenses, and heating and gas, waste, all of, all those costs for each building, others billed separately? And is that, is that what you mean? Like, that might be why you would see utility bills? Like, okay.
Right. And I've seen it done, by the way, both ways, in municipal and school budgets. So when we craft that FY25 budget, we may suggest to you, because ultimately it's your decision, to allocate those energy costs by school. Or in some communities, I've seen it more generalized, in that in a facilities budget, you have an overall budget for gas and electric costs, that's then internally allocated to each building. And so as we progress throughout the year, we'll work with Dr. Cobb's and the facilities team, and then you, as to how we want to represent that. But now we're really, we're more fact-finding than anything else.
Okay. Yeah. Can I ask one last question? I'm so sorry. And I apologize, because I know I was late the last time that you spoke, Mr. Clarkson, but I was looking at the non-net school spending, the first page of the non-net school spending in our packet here, and I was looking at the transportation and special education. And I just, just looking quickly at the percent used and expensed and encumbrances, it looks like we're at 92% and 98% for, I think that must be in district and out of district, non-net school spending, and those are categorized in the fifth and sixth line of the transportation budget. I'm just thinking in terms of where these charts that we're providing, that we're showing to the public and things, we're at, we're expecting to be at about 42.9% of spending through this date of this meeting. I just wanted to check on what the encumbrances were for. Is that projected cost through the year for students that are placed in special education settings and require the transportation for the year? Would we expect that we're reaching 98 or 97% of a budget item for school transportation for special education, and we're not halfway through the year, and we've, is that a situation, like you said, where we haven't accounted for the cost, and it's going to cost us double what we thought? Sorry.
No, don't, please don't apologize. That's why I come, so we can have this dialogue. And I think it's helpful for the school committee and for the public to see that we're actually having the conversations we're supposed to have about what it costs to run the Brockton Public Schools. So just this afternoon, I had a fairly detailed discussion with some of our finance folks, our acting budget director, Evan LaCass, on the city side, and Sarah Butler, who's an accountant on the school side, about that very question.
Okay.
Because there are costs that are reflected in this non-net school spending Munis budget that are incurred, that are addressed with additional aid from the Commonwealth. And so they are reflected here, because this is how the budget was constructed in Munis. But we had a discussion about the best way actually to reflect those costs, understanding that there's additional funding from the Commonwealth to address some of those out-of-district costs, and that they should not be part of the net school spending budget. But because the transportation department has not had a line item budget, that this is how the costs have been reflected. So it's, it's a keen observation on your part, and it's something that we're aware of, that it skews what it actually, what the non-net costs are, because those costs should be reflected in some other way, whether it's through a fund, or we reflect them in a different way, because those costs are addressed through a different funding source.
Okay.
Does that answer make sense to you?
It does. I mean, that was, again, it was my concern. I know this was something we discussed with the 2023 budget, was the cost of transportation, and specifically transportation in the special education realm, knowing that some students are transported from out of town, some students are transported to schools out of town, and we're required, we're obligated to provide that. But it just, when I, when I see that amount already, you know, you know, the true remaining budget, such small numbers and the percent used today, I just wanted to ensure that, you know, we have a plan for making sure that students are getting where they need to go, and that we know, and we can anticipate what the cost would be. But knowing now that there is funding from outside, I mean, obviously, the question is what amount is that? But that's, again, that's another one of those alarming things, is if we have to wait until June to find out what we're going to receive from out-of-state, out-of-district funding or resources to help supplement that. That's, again, that's that part where, you know, you're kind of left gasping, like, do we know how much we're going to have to spend in total this year? Have we budgeted enough for that? And obviously, I mean, that's, that's, you really can't plan, it's very difficult, I think, to plan for the next year, not knowing which students you have in district that might need those services, and how do you prepare a budget expecting to send students to out-of-district placements? You really can't do that. You don't want to, you don't want to plan to do that. But that's, thank you. I think that addresses some of that.
I will, as a follow-up, look at those rather large encumbrances of the 281 and the 298,000. My hunch is that those are for contracts that have been executed to transport students, and so the encumbrance has been requested to ensure that there is sufficient funding for the rest of the year. But I will confirm that, because those are large encumbrances.
Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you.
Any other, Mr. Rodriguez?
Mr. Clark, I liked your idea of when we actually craft the budget to actually have the utilities per school, which will give us a better microscope on which schools are using more electricity, so we can get to the root of the problem, that maybe there's something that we're missing, you know, ventilation, or new windows, or something, to break that into, you know, to break it down. So I think that, that should be the course. That's just my, my opinion, which will be easier for us, instead of looking at one document, that, you know, we can look at the Gilmore, we can look at the Kennedy, or the high school, and see which schools are wasting. And then, you know, obviously, that's some data for us to break in. The only question I have, Dr. Cobb's, if you can answer this. I know we have an IT department, and I know they're just not changing toners on printers. Here, we have a service to workers, and I know I'm not, when it was, you know, explained to us when we were installing these vape sensors, I thought that was supposed to be going through our IT department to actually install it. So I'm just curious, why are we getting a bill for insta-
We didn't install it with the IT department.
We didn't?
They, we contracted out, we don't have the technician to actually install them. We have one, actually, Joe Campbell.
He's the only one?
Right. The IT techs don't do, they pull the wires generally and install, you know, things like, equipment like that. They have really computer equipment, and laptops, et cetera, detectors, you know, they, they don't do the hard wiring and installing smoke detectors, vape detectors, those kind of things. That would be, again, that's Joe, basically. So that's why we end up subbing out a lot of the work.
Okay, I mean, I think we'll have a different discussion off camera.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clarkson.
All right, thank you all very much.
Appreciate your time. Oh, yeah, we do have to vote on the, okay. So for the bills, I would entertain a motion for us to approve the packet of overdue, honestly, unpaid bills from years, for $113,619.68 towards bills for services rendered in a prior year.
$113,619.68 towards bills and services rendered in prior years.
So that's a second.
Can I get a second? Second, okay. Mr. Rodriguez first, properly seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Can I get a show of hands? And can you ask-
You want to do a roll call, because it's remote.
Yeah, okay, I'll do a roll call, because I'm Mr. Sullivan. Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Homer?
No.
Ms. Rivas Mendez?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay. Okay, so it's been passed. Do we have any items to refer to subcommittee?
Sheriff?
Okay. All right, let's move on to the consent agenda. We have A through F. I want to throw it out to the floor. Does anybody have anything on the consent agenda that they'd like to take out of order?
Motion to approve consent agenda?
Okay, and I, let me read through each one of them, and then we can take a vote on, including all of them. So, A, approval of minutes, special school committee meeting on November 2nd, 2023. B, approval of minutes, regular school committee meeting September 20th, 2023. C, approval of 2023, 2024 home education requests. D, request for authorization to accept a proposal and expenditure of funds for fiscal year 24 targeted award from Mass DESE, D-E-S-E, for the mandated new IEP form at $112,584, and for the fiscal year 24 municipal cybersecurity awareness grant, which is free services. E, request for authorization to submit a proposal and expenditure of funds for fiscal year 24 FC, capital F C, 344, homeless emergency support grant for $1,000 per child. And then F, acceptance of human resources notifications, appointments certified personnel, appointments non-certified, and personal actions, leaves of absences, resignations, and retirements. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda, A through F?
Motion to approve the consent agenda, as stated from A through F.
Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Rivas Mendez, properly seconded by Ms. Sullivan. I'll do a roll call. Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Homer?
Yes.
Ms. Rivas Mendez?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. So that has been approved. Moving on to unfinished business, we have a discussion and potential vote on the amendment to Dr. James Cobb's contract, which we discussed on November 28th, 2023. Everyone in, you know, on the school committee received a copy of that, and so I would entertain a motion to vote on the amended contract for Dr. Cobb's.
Motion to approve the amendment of Dr. James Cobb's contract dated November 28th, 2023.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, thank you. So Mr. Rodriguez, properly seconded by Ms. Rivas Mendez. I'll do a roll call. Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Homer?
Yes.
Ms. Rivas Mendez?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. So that has approved, so moved. And now, under new business, we have a discussion and a potential vote regarding the policy manual subcommittee meeting on November 28th, 2023. And now under new business, we have a discussion and a potential vote regarding the policy manual subcommittee meeting on November 28th, 2023. I know Ms. Azak is not with us tonight. Does somebody want to speak to that?
Yes.
Okay.
So I will read the minutes of November 29th, 2023. We met on this day at the Arnon School Auditorium. We had Ms. Azak present, Mr. Homer, myself, and Mrs. Sullivan was absent. The public was able to view this through the link. Also present was Dr. Kathleen Moran and Ms. Marcia Andrade Serpa. Ms. Azak invited School Registration and Parent Information Center Director, Ms. Marcia, who was able to address the policy IBVG and IHBGR homeschooling. She walked through the policy where she talked about, she introduced the process, but she also talked about an online form where parents submit their requests to consider, to be considered for homeschooling. Ms. Azak was able to go for the full, the full school committee later in December 2023. Then we had Dr. Kathleen Moran, who's our Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, and she spoke about four particular policies. The GBGF Family Medical Leave Act, where we removed the language concerning COVID-19. GBJC Teachers' Personnel File, language was changed in the last sentence from will be placed to may be placed. GCIA Philosophy of Staff Development, we added language to item five, if funding is available. GBECA Criminal Offender Record Information, this policy was, was moved to ADDA and ADDR. Ms. Azak wanted to investigate further before approving this item. A motion was made by Mr. Homer and it was properly seconded by Ms. Rivas, Mrs. Rivas Mendez. Then Ms. Azak read each item from Section I instruction and recommended determination for each item advised by the MAS, which is Massachusetts Association of School Committees and Legal Counsel. And the spreadsheet was color coded. Green was MAS policy, orange recommended to move, pink recommended to add, and blue BPS specific. As it was, the only item that came under this discussion was IA instructional goals. This policy was BPS specific, not in MAS, and it was the will of this group to recommend keeping it and review the goal annually. A motion was made by Mrs. Rivas Mendez and it was properly seconded by Mr. Homer. And then as the time was concluded, a motion was made by Mr. Homer and then properly seconded by Mrs. Rivas Mendez, myself. And then there was no further business and the subcommittee adjourned at 7:08 PM.
Thank you. That was a robust report out, Ms. Rivas Mendez.
Always. That's what I'm known for.
So I will entertain a motion to approve the policy manual subcommittee meeting, meeting minutes.
Motion to approve the policy manual subcommittee meeting minutes from November 28th, 2023.
Thank you, Mr. Homer. Thank you, Ms. Rivas Mendez. So Mr. Homer first, Ms. Rivas Mendez seconded. So I'll do a roll call. Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Homer?
Yes.
Ms. Rivas Mendez?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Excellent. And then, oh, the kind of last order of business we have is regarding our Tuesday, December 19th, regular school committee meeting. We need to look at changing the time from 7:00 PM to 6:00 PM in the VHS Little Theater. And so I'll, I don't think, does anybody have a, a problem with changing the time? I don't think we do. So I'll entertain a motion to change the time from 7:00 to 6:00.
Motion to change the time from 7:00 to 6:00 for our meeting.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, excellent. So Ms. Rivas Mendez, seconded by Mr. Homer. Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Homer?
Yes.
Ms. Rivas Mendez?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm a yes as well. Okay. And next we have announcements. Does, and, we did put announcements at the end to make sure that we could make announcements for anything coming up. Would anybody like to share any announcements?
Nobody has any announcements? I have something I want to share.
Sure.
And I hope that we can have an open and transparent conversation amongst the elected members. There was a resolve that was, that was filed by the city council to invite and quote, it's on the city website, says interim. Dr. Cobb's is acting superintendent. It's listed as interim, so I think that's an error, if that could be corrected. School Committee Vice Chair Kathleen Ellis and Mayor Robert Sullivan to appear before the city council, sitting as the finance committee to discuss the Brockton Public Schools, Brockton High School, and recent issues regarding budget and financial governance, audit, staffing, and matters related therein. Invited, Dr. James Cobb's, Kathleen Ellis is the vice chair, and Mayor Robert Sullivan. And the reason why I am bringing this up is that this body was, there was a resolve that was filed that this committee did take the due diligence and showed some respect to show up to the city council to answer some questions. I was in favor of that because we are elected officials and we do not respond or, you know, answer to the city council. That day was an embarrassment to this committee. And what is happening politically is that we have people on the other aisle that is pointing the fingers at this, at this, at this elected body. And at this point, we should not be interjecting with the city council and pointing fingers at each other. They said some things that were uncalled for, unprofessional, and I will say it again and again and again. And I responded to certain individuals. I don't take anything back that I stated. Everything that I stated was actual and true facts. The only thing that I made was a comment about socks. I take that back, that I did make that comment. It was unprofessional of myself for saying that. But I was in the moment because I have a lot of passion and love for the city of Brockton and for our students. This, this is, what we're discussing in what a resolve that they're asking for us, it's all public knowledge. Our meetings are recorded. The city council, as some of us can go back and watch the city council meetings, they can watch this. Nothing is being done in secrecy behind closed doors. They have executive session, we have executive session. So I know they are very educated and are asking any of those questions. It is my opinion, only as one of the members here, that this body, neither Dr. Cobb's, neither Kathy Ellis, I can't speak for the mayor, to interject or to report to the council to ask any questions. We already voted, we had a discussion, and we have an audit coming forth, that we just let it play out. Let the audit happen. Once the audit is complete, it's very transparent. We made it as transparent as can be. The council is going to know about it, the public is going to know about it, but there is no other questions that we can answer for them that there is not already public knowledge about. So if a city councillor wants to, to know what's going on, our meetings and our meetings, I hope they're up to date published, they can ask that. And I respectfully ask that any questions that the councillors do have, they put it in writing. Because if I was to go to the clerk's office and file a resolve to bring those councillors before this body, they are not going to show up. And I don't think we should interject or anybody because they singled out this whole body and just added the vice chair as Kathy Ellis to go and answer questions. And if there's any questions that need to be answered by this collective body, it should be the chair, which is the mayor, Mayor Robert Sullivan, and our legal counsel. So I don't know how anybody else feels. I'm very passionate about this and I don't want what happened a few months ago to happen again and we're starting pointing fingers. You know, we all need to fall back and work together. That's what it's all about. We have a problem, let's just fix it. None of this trying to, you know, pound our chest to say who has more authority. Because when it comes down to law, the school committee has more authority. And I hope everybody's educated enough to know how much authority that this body has. And that's what I always preach. Go to the chart and the course, know your role, ask questions, work with our community. And it's also working with our councillors. But going to file this resolve to go and question us, that's not their job. It is not our responsibility to show up to the council for them to grill us. And I hope this doesn't happen.
Yeah, and like mentioned, our agenda's posted, so they're invited to come any time upon us to ask any questions. That's usually how it would be done because we're a different government entity. And any phone calls can be made. I mean, I know a lot of phone calls go to you, Kathy, but I know I was questioned in front of them for accounts review and it was in the fly. And I'll be honest, I felt embarrassed, but I am more than welcome. You can call me. I can answer those questions. And, you know, if I need some time to answer them, please do, because it's not a matter of who's doing their job better, but it's a matter of working together for the love of this community and of the city. I also want to make another announcement. For this Saturday, December 9th, from 10:00 to 11:30 AM, the Brockton Main Library Lingual's, there's, I'm sorry. There's the Right to Read Event, which Dr. Hayward talked about in our DREI Subcommittee. That event is the Saturday, December 9th, from 10:00 to 11:30 AM. It's at the Brockton Main Library Lingual's Auditorium. That Brockton Main Library is in Main Street. This is a national event that focuses on literacy and Brockton is one of the few in Massachusetts to have it. I'm also like excited because I think as an educator, a lot of times we don't think about our past of the privilege that we have to be able to read today. And this is, I know this is an event that talks about the right to read and I'm pretty sure the right to have the access to have free public libraries. So just as an announcement, it'll be this Saturday.
That's great. All right, anything else from the body? All right, well, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion, second.
Okay, well, Ms. Sullivan, properly seconded by Ms. Rivas Mendez. I'll do a roll call. Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Homer?
Yes.
Ms. Rivas Mendez? Mr. Rodriguez? Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Thank you, everybody. Safe travels and have a good night.